Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting on Wednesday, May 1st, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Kay Connaught, Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
J.P. Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Tom Peake.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zerrin.
Here.
Okay, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Behind us.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The motion will move the flag.
It threw us off.
We're like lemmings.
All the people watching going, "What the heck are they doing?"
Okay, motion for the approval of the minutes of April 17th, 2019.
Second?
Motion second for this April 17th minutes. Any, all those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? No's? Okay, motion passes. Public speak time is everyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on public hearings is your opportunity. If you can just come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, now seeing we can move our communications from lots of officials, boards, and committee. I'm just gonna automatically go to Councilor Zerrin because I'm sure he has a whole bunch of activities to tell us about.
Oh, wow. My, my, I guess my reputation precedes me.
Get your own slot now.
I have nothing, no.
Last brief.
Well, just briefly, I wanted to acknowledge and thank you President McCoy. You had sent me a nice text message. I wanted to acknowledge the yet another shooting that occurred within the last few days. I think it just reinforces why it's important that we kind of spoke our minds and supported kind of reasonable gun laws in signing our resolution. So, thank you, and Barbara, I still have, I have the list for you, so I'll get that to you. So, this is Pride Weekend, LGBTQ Pride Weekend, North Hampton Pride, but East Hampton will be taking over North Hampton Pride, or being a part of it, I should say, as you all know. So, those who have signed up to march, I think there's an email that's going out. Those who aren't marching should feel free to support. There will be an after-party at Abandoned Building Brewery, and I believe they're opening their new space up for that, too, so that will be nice. That's from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time on Saturday, May the 4th. Yes, there will be East Hampton Pride merchandise being sold, so for those of you who'd like to buy t-shirts, or pint glasses, or both, there's a package deal for that. What else can I say? I think President McCoy has something for the mayor to read tonight.
Yep.
And the mayor will also be reading a proclamation in support of Pride tomorrow, and City Hall will be flying the Pride flag.
No, it's not.
Tomorrow in these chambers at 6:30, East Hampton Neighbors is having an informational session, so hope to see some people there. I don't know, I feel like there's a lot of pressure to say more, but I don't really have more to say.
We're fine, you know.
No, no, no pressure.
So, I've all said, thank you.
Okay, I saw it, Councilor speaking, I'll come back to you. Last night, I, in these chambers, attended a Planning Department event with the Pioneer Valley Planning Committee to talk about climate change vulnerability and preparedness. It's this grant program that we're working with, they needed a public hearing to sort of talk about if we, as a society, don't come together to sort of stop climate change, what can we do as municipalities to mitigate its most horrible impacts. They had a little, they had done an all-day seminar earlier this year talking about this stuff, and had come up with a couple of projects that we might want to see funded with the state money if we become eligible for it. And the people there were able to vote, incidentally, they were able to use ranked choice voting to pick their top three, but they, the survey and the information on the projects and the survey of what projects the public might be interested in is going to remain online, I believe, for another few days or a week. I don't exactly remember the deadline, but if anyone on the council or anyone from the public wants to jump up and check out the projects and weigh in on them, the URL is easthamptonma.gov/mvp, and that'll bring you as a shortcut to the part of the Planning Department's site that has all of that exciting stuff on there. I was very impressed with the work that they were doing and encourage you all to weigh in. Great, thank you for the information. Councilor Lynch?
I just wanted to add one more event for Pride Weekend. Comics &amp; More is actually having their re-grand opening this weekend, and they're doing it on Saturday in between the end of the parade and before the abandoned building event, and they're having a free comic book day for all kids and families, welcome to come, and it is also, may the 4th be with you.
Okay, Councilor Rist?
Two things. One, I apologize, I can't make it. As you know, I have a lot, and my family is very much supportive of Pride Weekend. Unfortunately, we have a wedding in Pennsylvania, but I wanted to say thank you for organizing this, Councilor Zerrin.
Well, it was a group effort.
Group effort, okay.
It was my pleasure to put it forward.
The other item I wanted to bring up is I wanted to congratulate the We the People Group.
Yes.
That did fantastic in Washington.
Yes.
Not quite sure where they ended up, but the fact that, once again, they represent our little community in the nation, where 50, I think it was 55 different states and territories were represented, and it's fantastic, and it's a testament to our high school, to Mrs. Brown, and the teachers we have, that this can happen, continually happens in our community. We have a great school system. I mean, this is a testament to it.
All right, great announcements, thank you. Anything else? Okay, so it's time, we can move on to, oh, yes, so on American legations, Mayor LaChapelle cannot, will not be here tonight, but she did ask if I could read the resolution, again, relating to lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersexual, weak recognition. This proclamation will be also read tomorrow during the flag raising, when the mayor will be in, be available. So, let me start the resolution. Whereas every person must be afforded the rights to equal treatment and live free from discrimination on the United States of America in common with the Massachusetts constitutions, and whereas understanding that our city stands stronger when we all stand together to promote the cultural, municipal, and economic progress of the city of East Hampton, and whereas historical organizing and activism by so many to achieve equality under law for all is duly recognized, along with the cause of speaking up and acting forward have not and do not come without consequences, and whereas June 28th, 2019 marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall in Riots, recognized as a public catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex right movements, and whereas June is nationally recognized as Pride Month to the commemorative, the June 1969 Stonewall in Riots and resulting civil rights movement, and May 4th, 2019 marks the 38th annual North Hampton Pride Parade, a regional celebration of LGBTQI activism for civil rights and equality, and whereas a rainbow flag historically symbolizes lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex pride, and whereas to honor and recognize the ongoing struggle for civil rights and equal protection for all, the city of East Hampton flies a rainbow flag in celebration of the LGBTQI as part of its ongoing efforts to be a just, inclusive city. Now, therefore, I, Nicole LaChapelle, Mayor of the City of East Hampton, do hereby recognize May 4th, 2019 as our regional pride celebration, so that we may reflect on ways to continue to work together in efforts to promote respect, understanding, and equality in our city, and furthermore, recognize our regional and national pride by flying the rainbow flag at City Hall in this year, 2019, from May 1st through May 8th, in witness whereof, signed by Nicole LaChapelle. So, again, thank you for that proclamation, it'll be read again tomorrow. I guess we're on to boards and committees. Councilor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to let the council know that we have established dates and times for the budget hearings. They are May 8th, that's this Wednesday, Public Works, Enterprise, Culture, and Recreation, May 9th, Public Safety, Human Service, Unclassified, Insurances, et cetera, May 14th, Education, Debt and Interest, and May 29th, Revenue, General Government, and CPA. There's a week in there that's missing because the mayor is out of town, so I needed to make it that time. Obviously, there's a lot in the budget, and it would be useful if you're really interested in any one of those different sections of the budget and you have questions, I encourage you to come to the Finance Committee meeting, as it will be much more enlightening than waiting on the public hearing, which is dealing with all of them. Of course, it is your right to ask questions at that time, too. Anyway, that's when they're gonna be held. I'd like to make a statement on new business. We have some new business today. First reading, request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, the Fire Department requests as listed in descriptions by Chief Mottar. The amount requested is $269,684.83 to be transferred from free cash to be transferred to the following accounts, full-time regular pay, $31,202. Fire overtime pay, $157,946.56. Sick leave buyback, $25,285.27. Fire radio, telephone, and other communications, $8,298. Fire building equipment repair and maintenance, $1,583. Repairs to vehicles and equipment, $13,000. EMS incentive, $20,000. Maintenance service agreements, $3,000. Repairs to vehicle and equipment, $1,370. Miscellaneous professional and technical services, $4,000. Ambulance, medical, and surgical supplies, $4,000, for a total of $269,684.83. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, pay balances and anticipated needs of the Fire Department as listed by Chief Mottar on January 14th, 2019. I would like to make a motion that this be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second?
Motion second to move the supplemental appropriation of $269,684.83 to finance. Additional questions or comments, Councilor Zerrin?
Do we know, how does this supplemental appropriation compare to the requests in previous years?
It's high, as he explained to me on the phone, which I'll get into. Two members of the department were off for a few months because they were called up on active duty as reservists. This created a very high, most of this is because of that, overtime cost. So, it is unusual, to be honest with you. We've had overtime, but it's never been this high, but it's unusual that they, they had two guys, I think they went to Afghanistan, so.
Okay.
We'll get more explanation from him at the finance.
Thank you.
Additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
I'd like to also make a motion to set a public hearing for this at the next meeting. I think it's May 15th, 6:15 in these chambers.
Second?
Okay, motion second to set a public hearing for this supplemental appropriation, May 15th, 2019, in these chambers. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
I would like the city clerk to put this at the top of the agenda on May 8th, we'll deal with it before we deal with the budget. I think that concludes, yes, except for the public hearing, thank you.
Public safety, Councilor Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. President. We only have a new business today, and I want to make a motion to move a petition for joint of identical poll location and floor enroll for our next meeting. I mean, I want to send it to the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second to move the ever source request for the, there's another poll?
It is a poll, yeah.
Okay, to Public Safety for a discussion. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can try to squeeze in a couple more. Councilor Connaught, please.
I'll talk fast. So, we met this evening, and we had three mayoral appointments to approve. The first one, Tom Malsberry, to the Board of Public Works. I will just say that Tom and his wife moved here last September. He is employed by Fussin' O'Neill, which is an engineering company. He has an engineering background, he has, does environmental sampling. He originally applied for the Telecom Committee, but when Stan McCoy resigned from the Board of Public Works, the mayor reached out and said, "You'd be perfect, what do you think?" So, he was happy to participate. So, I will make a motion, I'll take, I will make a motion to approve Tom Malsberry to the Board of Public Works with the term expiration of December 31st, 2019.
Second. Okay, motion second to move Tom Malsberry to approve to the Board of Public Works. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
The next one is Elodie Chickwin. Elodie, I found out, lives a house and away from, one and a half houses away from me. She has a special ed background, she has worked at Center Pepin, she has a heart for the underserved and wants to be, help to be a voice for education and agriculture. She is on the East Hampton, she's part of the East Hampton Farmers Market. She has the time now to participate in this committee. She's a big advocate for her family farm and family farming, and she and her family are actively working so that their father can age in place on the farm, as they have a very long history in East Hampton. I will make a motion to approve Elodie Chickwin to the Agricultural Commission with a term expiration of December 31st, 2021.
Second. Motion second to move Elodie Chickwin to Agriculture Commission. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
And the last one we have is Thelma Isri to the Veterans Council. Thelma joined the Air Force after 9/11 and spent 12 years in the Air Force stateside, working mostly as a troop leader. She has a LPN nursing background. She loves the community of East Hampton. She said that she wants to participate, and participating with veterans helps her to feel purposeful and gives life meaning, and she wants to do it as long as she can, as often as she can. She has a support dog, of course, I would have to mention the dog. She has a support dog named Lola, who is a Cavalier of King Charles Spaniel, and she sent me a picture, and I can attest to the fact that it's a pretty darn cute dog. So, I will make a motion to approve Thelma Isri to the Veterans Council with a term expiration of December 31st, 2021.
Motion second to move Thelma Isri to Veterans Council, expiration 12/31/2021. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
We have new business, so I would like to make a motion to move Kate Shapiro, the mayoral appointment of Kate Shapiro, to the Affordable and Fair Housing Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/2021, to the Appointment Subcommittee.
Second. Motion second to move Kate Shapiro to Appointment Subcommittee for consideration for the Affordable and Fair Housing. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
And our next meeting is May 15th at 5:30, this concludes.
Nice job, thank you.
Mr. President, I move the public hearings to be open.
Second. Okay, motion second to open public hearings. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Councilor Rist?
Unfortunately, these are all mine. First one, and I want to apologize, and I'll ask my Finance Committee colleagues to help with the explanations for this, because the mayor is not here, I didn't expect that, and I know the Finance Director is out of town or unavailable. This was a request to update the workman's compensation budget. It's needed because when the budget was originally adopted, it was estimated, there was an audit done by the, I guess the company that services this, and it's basically estimated wages versus actual wages, which is why there was a shortfall, always comes in at this time of year, because they don't know what workman's compensation will be needed. Did that sound right there? Pretty much. J.P., Bill?
I answered the question.
Okay. So, unfortunately, I don't have anyone from the city to answer your questions, so I'll answer whatever I can.
Jane?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's true. This is workman's comp. So, our personal director is here and can answer questions regarding this, from a personnel reason, obviously, financially, it's an estimated. I was correcting all that.
The only, you're off the hook, Jane, because I think this goes to Dan. I just want to, I think I heard you say that having this shortfall is a typical budgetary thing that we typically go through, or is this an anomaly?
It comes often. Some years, we get lucky, some years, we don't, as I recall.
Okay.
I can't. No.
So, it's not an isolated issue?
Jane wants to correct my.
Come on, Jane. Never mind, you're back on the hook.
Yeah.
I tried, Jane, I'm sorry.
Each year, we have to estimate what our wages will.
Just for the audience.
Jane Zachwood, Personnel Director. Each year, we have to estimate what the workers, for workers' comp rates, we have to estimate what our wages will be. After the year is finished, the insurance, the workers' comp insurance company comes back, we have to give them what our actual wages were, and some years, yes, we are lucky, and we estimate it higher than they were this year that were, we were just audited for, we estimated low.
So, it's not terribly unusual?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I wasn't that off?
Not that far.
And this is a premium pay, correct?
This is our premium, yes.
Premium, yeah. It's not a workman's comp claim or something, it's a premium.
Got it, okay.
An additional questions for Personnel Director? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane.
Don't go far, Jane.
Anyone from the public who would like to address the council, considering this transfer? Okay, Councilor Rist?
I make the following motion for the full council approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $6,942 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, $6,942, to be transferred to workman's compensation, $6,942, for the purpose of the payment of additional workman's compensation after audit of wages actually paid.
Second. Motion second to approve the departmental transfer of $6,942 for workman's compensation. Additional questions or comments?
This was approved 3 to 0 by the Finance Committee.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Oh, boy. The next one is our famous pickleball court, and our president is the person who has asked for this. The CPA approved this, well, sort of.
I support it.
He supported. He has some show and tell as well. The CPA committee did approve this unanimously. This is what I call seed money, it's design money. In order for all the grants, the both CPA appropriations this evening require grants to follow through with the actual cost of the, of whatever we're proposing, in this case, the pickleball courts, the estimate is something like $80,000, but without actual designs being done, and that's what this is paying for, we would not get those grants, they don't come through. The actual cost is $9,000, $3,000 is being paid for by recreation, so it's a $9,000 cost. We love it, it's another type of recreation that actually, as Joe will explain to you, especially for 55 and over, but anybody can play this sport, and he's going to show you what it is. It'll be built down by the soccer fields, our perk rec director is here. If you have any questions, and Joe's gonna show us what pickleball is, for those of you that don't know. Apparently, it's a sport that's really growing.
Played by old people.
Great, great.
So, I'm.
Joe, apparently, you're old, right? I don't play it.
Sign me up.
Yes. So, this, I'm learning this technology, be patient.
Do we want to turn the lights down, Joe? Bill?
Who turned them on?
Barbara.
I think we found, the very last switch on the left does the best for us here.
Well, no, the third or fourth one in.
Well, that one was good, there you go.
There you go.
That's okay. That works. Thank you.
So, let me, well, this is, see if I can chew gum and do this at the same time. This is a game that's been around, actually, for quite a while. It's been around since the 70s, it was, it was established out in the Midwest, northwest of the country, and it's grown exponentially for several years. It's very, very popular down south. I was a tennis player for years, and my tennis partner said, told me about it, and I said, "Well, it sounds stupid, but I'll give it a try." And I haven't picked up a tennis racket since, and for people in their 50s and older who are looking for a transition from either a full basketball court or a full tennis court, it's a really, it's a terrific game for activity and socialism, socialism, to socialize.
It's another meeting.
And so, I think it would be a terrific investment for the city. It also can be played, I was talking to Brian, our athletic director, and he, it is, kids are playing it in the gym. I know Salem has taught his kids it, so I think it's not just for, you know, in the 50-plus age group, it's, can be played at a, it can be played at a very high level as well. So, let me give you a little bit, I'm gonna skip around here so that we don't take up too much of the time, and unfortunately, the audio, only audio we have is on my computer, so I'll try to be quiet.
It's a game, kind of like this one, but not quite. We play here, on a 44-by-20-foot court with a 36-inch net and a non-volley zone we call a kitchen. Pickleball takes the best aspects of several different racket sports, plays with a paddle and a plastic ball that holds.
I didn't do that.
Oh, that looks pretty fun.
Wow, that's a precise number.
2.815. 815 million, yes.
Not 3, not 2.8.
Kind of thousands, let's say about 5% of actual.
I could totally play this.
Yeah, there's no running.
Okay. Bill, we'd be right there.
Hey, I'm solved.
It's not a wiffle ball.
Yeah. It's not a wiffle ball. It's not chuckleball, either.
It's not chuckleball.
I can chuckleball.
The other thing I kind of wanted to show you, there's actually, you know, I think a lot of what makes something sustainable in a community is the support system, and this tennis player, friend of mine that I told you about, is one of the best players in the country in her women's 50-over, and she's committed to it, and she will be giving free clinics to East Hampton residents if these are established to get the game going. So, again, we have a structure in place to promote the game. It's very popular, Agawam has four courts, Saturday mornings in the spring, there are lines, Westfield is building several courts, maybe six or more, so it's, again, it's growing everywhere, it's a very fast, as you can see here, sport, you can play it young, you can play it old. I do want to go to one little place here, it's just, you can see just the number, of course, this is down in Florida, sorry, so, but they do an aerial shot coming up any second now, and so when you talk about the popularity of this sport, come on, video, there, so you can see, you know, these are massively popular down south, and it's just an incredible way to get exercise and socialize. So, again, I'm in big support of this effort for our city, and I think it'd be a great addition. So, if anyone has any quick questions, before you get the money aspect with.
So, you have to be present.
Oh, a lot of questions, okay, Owen.
Well, so, one thing, just my understanding for clarification, just, just in the, that the, the court surface, or the way that the court will be constructed, is in such a way that it could always be reused for something else, for some, whatever reason.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll feel very much like a tennis court, I mean, it'll be like, is like a tennis court. There will obviously be, as these pictures show, there'll be lines that are painted that are strictly for pickleball, but for if, you know, there, you know, if they did not become popular, or wasn't being used, it could probably be, you know, made into a tennis court, or I'm sorry, it could be repurposed to something, if it, for whatever reason, it wasn't popular.
Oh, I guess.
We get one question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was just open.
Learn how this works. Two questions.
Oh, two.
You can answer them in whatever order you'd like.
Point of order, I thought you just said we only get one question.
Yeah, sucker. So, how does it, how is it named pickleball, and where does one get the equipment?
Yes, no, so, it's very, it's funny you mention, it's a very strange name, and I actually, it frustrates me because I think the game would be taken more seriously as a sport if it had a different name. From what, the most kind of, at least intriguing name I've heard is that the people who created this game, it was like in a summer camp, they had a bunch of bored children, "What do we do? We have a wiffle ball, we have a paddle, we have an old tennis net or badminton net, let's make," and that's how, and supposedly, their dog, Pickle, picked up the ball, and supposedly, that is the origin, although I've heard some others as well.
It's my vote, the dog liked it.
Can you get the equipment?
Oh, yeah, the, there's actually, you know, it's, this is, there is actually pro pickleball. There are, there are, I mean, obviously, we're not talking tennis-level prize money, but there's a very big tournament going down in Florida right now called the U.S. Open, and the winners will win like $10,000, which, again, is not much, but, and there are, you know, there are hundreds of people playing in this tournament this weekend, so it's very popular. There's a website, pickleballcentral.com, you can get it, whatever you want, and pickleball.
Okay.
Yes, Salem.
Defer to the PE teacher for a moment.
that are painted that are strictly for pickleball, but for if, you know, there, you know, if they did not become popular, it wasn't being used, it could probably be, you know, made into a tennis court, or I'm sorry, it could be repurposed to something if it, for whatever reason, it wasn't popular.
We get one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Learn how this works. Two questions.
Oh, two.
You can answer them in whatever order you'd like.
Point of order, I thought you just said we only get one.
Yeah, sucker. So, how does it, how is it named pickleball, and where does one get the equipment?
No, so, it's very, it's funny you mention that, it's a very strange name, and I actually, it frustrates me because I think the game would be taken more seriously as a sport if it had a different name. From what, the most kind of, at least intriguing name I've heard is that the people who created this game, it was like in a summer camp, they had a bunch of bored children, "What do we do? We have a wiffle ball, we have a paddle, we have an old tennis net or badminton net, let's make," and that's how, and supposedly their dog Pickle picked up the ball, and supposedly that is the origin, although I've heard some others as well.
It's my vote, the dog liked it.
Can you get the equipment?
Oh yeah, the equipment, there's actually, you know, it's, this is, there is actually pro pickleball. There are, there are, I mean, obviously, we're not talking tennis-level prize money, but there's a very big tournament going down in Florida right now called the US Open, and the winners will win like $10,000, which again, is not much, but, and there are, you know, there are hundreds of people playing in this tournament this weekend, so it's very popular. There's a website, pickleballcentral.com, you can get it, whatever you want in pickleball.
Okay.
Yes, Salem?
Defer to the PE teacher for a moment. So, pickleball court is the exact same dimensions as a badminton court, and I think that's important to recognize, if you're talking about reuse. Literally, the only difference is there's a no-volley zone in pickleball, which is seven feet from the net, the no, the short serve line in badminton is six and a half feet, so it's, you know, it's a six-inch difference. That's, that's really the only difference, other than a couple of lines between delineating singles and doubles courts. So, and, and that was one thing I would say, is it would be amazing, since I'm, I'm a huge fan of badminton myself, it'd be amazing if we could have nets that were adjustable between badminton and pickleball, because then you could have a dual-use court, and I think that could potentially get us a little bit more mileage. And I don't want to detract from pickleball because it's fun, great sport, you know, but it would also just, you know, add to the versatility of the, of the space. So, just put that out there.
Are there, from a financial standpoint, are there, or a revenue standpoint, are there opportunities to generate money for the Parks and Rec Department, for instance, through building these, i.e. like league fees or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think John Mayton will see better to that. I mean, obviously, there is, you know, a small amount of money that may come in through increased memberships, and dedicated pickleball courts are still very, very uncommon. You'll find, Look Park, for instance, on some of their tennis courts, has painted pickleball lines over their pre-existing, and there's a portable net you can put up, but as far as people looking for permanent courts, I said, I know they're in Agawam, I think they're building some in Westfield, but they're still pretty sparse, and so I think, certainly, I would travel, I've traveled to Agawam for them, I would certainly travel for dedicated pickleball courts. And again, my friend Vaughn has actually, and maybe for our benefit, has offered to run a pickleball program for North Hampton, and they decided they would do it themselves, and so, you know, as far as leagues and instruction and all that stuff, I think that that would be an opportunity for those kind of things as well.
Can I ask John to come forward?
Oh yeah, are you done with me now?
I'm done.
Quick question, how much is the cost of the equipment?
Oh, the cost of equipment, you know, like most sports, you know, the beginner paddles can probably be 20 or 30, and then for these higher-end, you know, professional player paddles, it can be like 130 or something, if you want to pay that.
Very reasonable cost to get entry.
If someone wanted to.
Oh yeah, yeah.
We're not providing.
Right.
No, no, I understand.
John Mayton, you can talk the other part.
John, I just.
I don't know, Joe, you did such a wonderful job, I was gonna say.
Name for the record.
Yep, John Mason, Parks and Recreation. As Joe mentioned, you know, this sport is growing. In January, I had our annual, semi-annual Park and Rec Professionals of the Pioneer Valley meeting. Belcher Town, Greenfield, Agawam, Westfield, you know, everybody's, you know, all the Park and Rec Directors are all looking down this, you know, Belcher Town, they use CPA money, they'll be finishing up this spring. Agawam, same thing, they've already completed theirs. Greenfield, you know, Westfield's on board at Stanley Park, they're looking to do that stuff too, so. It's gaining in popularity. If it does in 10 years, we have a slab there for, you know, whether, you know, maybe badminton comes the, the new thing, or, you know, we could, it's the size, it's going to be the size of a tennis court, because we're building two, which equals one tennis court. So there is usage, that we could repurpose it if, if we have to, years down the road. As long, I think as long as Joe's around, it will make sure the popularity stays high.
John, just to make, for the council, Park and Rec Mission fully approved this?
Yes, yep, they're fully in support of it, yeah.
And secondly, can you detail a little bit about the kind of grant that might be available in addition to CPA money, once you get the designs?
It was probably going to be just us jumping in as Park and, Park and Rec, there's not a lot of money for s-
Sports?
For pickleball builds. The communities around here have used CPA funds to-
Okay, I forgot.
To purchase that, you know.
John, where in the park again, where we?
Soccer fields, so the, along the wooded line, right of the parking lots, it's just, there's nothing that we store wood there, because we still heat our building by wood in the winter time, so that's where our wood storage is, we can just move our wood storage somewhere else.
And the courts that look like tennis courts in the front, by Daily Field?
Yeah, those are clay courts, so they're, yeah, they're clay.
What's happening there?
Yeah, so they're, they're not ideal for, for pickleball.
Right, are they gonna be repurposed?
Oh, we, we use them every year, so yes, on weather.
When do they open up?
Yeah, so they, we're on, we're held hostage to Vermont, a company out of Vermont that comes down. There's very few companies left that, that deal with clay courts, so we, as much as I hound them, it's usually just before Memorial Day, when they get down here and recondition those courts. So they have to get it done every single year, they have to get reconditioned.
Do you keep any statistics on usage there, and what percentage of the time would you say those courts are used?
Those are used every day, all summer long, in the morning, usually midday, because it gets hot, it's a little less, but then in the evening, we get the after-dinner crowd come back, yeah, so, so the, the clay courts still get used quite a bit.
Oh yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, yo. I just have a concern, I think this is a great idea. I think bringing, I mean, he said that it's not going to be only for 50 and over, but then bringing people 50 and over to the park, not just to watch their kid playing soccer or baseball or softball, I think it's a great idea. But I have a concern, usually, he says it could be really popular, right, and the parking issue at Notre Park is, is big. So, is, with, with this, adding another sport at the, at the park, is enough parking to cover this?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So what, as part of this, we're, we're, we're not going to add a paved parking lot, but we're going to do in-house, like a gravel, you know, stone kind of base parking and add some spots there. There's only going to be two courts, so you're not going to have that many cars there, but, you know, we do have a major parking issue in the park, especially when we have all those soccer games and everything else going on. But we are going to add space there. They won't be designated for pickleball per se, but it'll be, we'll add a few more spaces just on that side that they can, you know, people park there anyways already, you know, so, those have to park next to the pickleball.
Plus, especially now that it's raining a lot, you guys are really busy. Do we have the personnel to work with the field that we have and including now more, more work for the pickleball?
There, it's pretty much just, just blowing it, blowing it when the leaves, you know, or, you know, debris gets on it, that there's no, once it's built, there's no maintenance costs, yeah, so it's, it's kind of like the basketball courts, once a week, they'll get out there with the big blower, blow it off, 15, 20 minutes, so it's not going to affect our department like some other projects that we've done in the past that have had a lot of maintenance costs and, and time associated with. This, this is pretty, pretty cut and dry with our time.
Thank you.
In terms of the design, $6,000 takes care of the design?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand. Apologize, the, what's the development cost that's projected for the courts?
Yeah, it's gone all over the map, because I've talked to, you know, a lot of rec directors, and they've, they've gone, you know, 50 to 100, you know, they've been in that ballpark. We want to, we want to add-
For court or?
For, for total, for two, I'm talking, yeah, for two, yeah. So, you know, they've, we want to add fencing around ours, some have without fencing, some went with, you know, higher fencing, sound barriers because they've had neighbors. I know Agawam had to deal with that, they've had to go with a higher, and some kind of sound protection because there's a neighbor that's somewhat close to the pickleball courts, and it can make a, a noise that's, you know, mind-numbing if, if you, if you're, you know, if your house was right next to it, you know, but this is a good spot, section three, there's no one around, you know, there are a couple of hawks in the woods that you'll bother putting other than that, you know, it's pretty good.
You know, currently, we have the temporary one down at the Millside Park, which I don't know if everybody's aware of that, that even exists. What, what do they need to do to use that? Does a net have to be put up at, currently, so we can get some interest, bring some people down, maybe Joe's friend could go teach some classes and spark some interest?
They did, they've done that already, so, yeah, they've, they've, they've been down there, they've advertised, they bring their net, their own equipment down to help introduce it. It's not ideal, because it is a basketball court, there are other activities going on in, during that time and in that, that space, even though we, we try to designate that, there's other things very close, so.
It was, it was a great starting place for, for the East Hampton, the problem with it is, again, it was a share with a basketball court. We've had a few basketball courts roll over and take the net with it, you know, there's no fencing, so sometimes the ball, you're tracing it. It's also not necessarily particularly level, so that was also somewhat problematic. And also, as, as the league grows, we have been using the tri-county school gymnasium Monday and Wednesday nights from 6:30 to 9:00, and we've had probably about, it's probably about 40 people who have signed up, and they alternate between, you know, 15 people coming at a time, 12 to 15 people coming at a time. So there is, there's already an interest in it that we've sort of been, you know, bringing along, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, councilor, thank you.
From, from the, from the granting, potential granting of these CPA funds to, to then build and completion, do you have a estimated timeline?
We would hope to start construction in the fall. I, we're going to be aggressive on, on getting the plans and designs awarded quickly, and, and, and I want to get them back by like July 1st, August 1st at the latest, for the documents for construction, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, and then, and what, and then what is the intended plan, I'm sorry, I think somebody already asked this, but I didn't really realize the timeline was so short. What's the intended method of funding this?
CPA.
More CPA.
We'd come back to CPA, and the, the Park and Rec would put money into it as well as part of this project.
We also have an effort, you know, we don't necessarily have the population to compete with soccer and football, but there is a core group that is raising money, you know, talking to the typical people in our community who are always so generous, as well as the people who, you know, were from, who played a lot, to, to make that effort to show that this is something that we believe in and think would be good for the community.
And Mr. President?
Yes.
Does the local pickleball, is there a local East Hampton Pickleball Association on social media?
Yes, East Pickleball.
All right, I'll make sure I share that.
Any other questions for the, okay, thank you. Anyone from the public would like to address this appropriation, so be timely to come to the podium? Okay, councilor Rist?
I make a motion, made for the approval of the following appropriation, the amount is $6,000 to be appropriated from CPA reserve for open space, $6,000, to be appropriated to Nantucket Park Pickleball Court Design, $6,000 for the following purpose, for design phase, prepare construction plans, cost estimates, bid documents, and specifications in bidding and construction oversight, for capital improvements to create two new pickleball courts in Nantucket Park near the soccer complex.
Second? The motion, a second, additional questions or comments?
A question. Did I hear you earlier reference $9,000?
There's, if you look at the, there's 6,000-
Okay.
From CPA, and then it's matched by 3,000 from the recreation.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments?
That's because we're not appropriating the whole thing.
Was there one more?
I, I have just one, and it's, it's, this is my, I, I, I'm, I think this is a great idea, and I'm in full support of this. Like I said, I would love to see it double as a badminton court, so when it's not being used for pickleball, I think that'd be great. And, but this is my, my standard statement, I say when, every time that we either, you know, allocate CPA funds for a, a design or building of a project, like for softball and baseball fields, or football fields, or soccer fields, which we've done all of those, and I think that's great. And now that we're doing pickleball fields, hopefully, I think that's great. I, I do want to just put out that plug again, that I'm, I'm hoping at some point, we can look at increasing our outdoor basketball facilities, because the ones that we have are being used to capacity, especially down at Millside Park. And, and I don't want to take anything away from this, but I do think, I have a letter in front of me from an eighth grader who, you know, did a lot of work around increasing the access to basketball, so I just wanted to put that out there, because I do it every time.
No, no, that's, yeah, I'd like to advocate, councilor.
To echo that, CPA committee, I know, knowing who they are, would support Park and Rec request for additional basketball courts. Hint, hint. Anyway, that's not what we're talking about now, we have a motion.
Okay, any questions or comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstained, motion passes.
So the next is a little bit more difficult or controversial, it was that way with the CPA committee. The actual, what we're asking for is $30,000, CPA committee did approve it unanimously, but the finance committee approved it two to zero, councilor Kozinski abstained. There is a concern, because this is a fairly costly project. We have a stone building down at Daily Field, which serves as the bathroom. It has been out of commission for a while, and now is, a lot of people use the Daily Field during the year. There is a porta potty being used for all of those people for bathroom facilities, and it gets knocked over. It's not fun. This is a actual $40,000 cost for design. The Park and Rec Department, John, did apply for a grant using an estimated cost, not having construction drawings, and they were not approved. There is a park grant available, is that, John, you can come up and correct me if I'm wrong, but those grants need the actual design and construction drawings. So these aren't conceptual drawings, these are actual designs, so when and if they get grants and other funding to match CPA future funds, these drawings are always going to be good. The estimated cost, and this is an estimate, he wanted to make sure that I brought this forward, the $400,000 that he says this might cost is high in his part, it could be less, he's hoping it's less, but we don't know for sure. It is costly, and because of that, there was a lot of questions at the CPA level, and the finance committee had a lot of questions. But it is a historic building, the outside of the building, it's been around for, what, 100 years, I forget what he said.
1937.
1937, so more than, so almost 100 years. Anyway, it's, it's a beautiful building, and the outside of the building is in good shape, but the internal structure for the plumbing and everything else has to be done better, ADA compliant, you know the works, it has to be done correctly, and it's expensive. But we need proper bathroom facilities in that area. I think we've built bathrooms in other areas, and there were some costs at the CPA level about putting in temporary, and John, you can address that, but temporary facilities were not cost-effective, because you'd have to rent them, et cetera, I, I forget, Bill, we talked about that a little bit.
I said Sandy cans are about, it was 3,400 a year, and it was about 12,000 that we've already spent.
The figures were, you know, we might as well fix the building. The CPA committee did express the need for additional funding before they would grant, they're not going to grant the whole $400,000. Anyway, John, I'd like you to come up and also defend this, if you would, to the council. Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's all right. I know there's some neighbors here that want to talk as well about the project, so.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, this is for construction documents, we've actually gone for two grants, we went through the state for the ADA side of it, to have this building refurbished, and then we went for a park grant. To, put it bluntly, you know, to put your grant forward with sketch drawings, as much as George is wonderful and he's great at his job, those aren't construction documents, and they're not certified by an architect, and the state puts us at the bottom of the pile when it comes to funding, if you're not coming through with true documents, construction documents that, that show the project, true cost, true designs. We've had to do it with many of our projects here in the city, and this one's, this one's no different. To be able to leverage funds, this is the approach that we have to take. This project was approved by CPA two years ago, when we were on the cusp, we thought of maybe receiving money, and CPA was going to put 138,000 towards this project of the total dollar amount that we were trying to get from the state. So this is not new to CPA, it's not new to the city, this is a, a building that's needed, that has a lot of historic value, not to mention, it serves so many that come to the park every day. The number of people that stop up and say, you know, "The bathroom's not open yet," and it's like, "Oh, no, the Sandy can's right there," that's, that's the bathroom that serves, you know, a coed softball game with, you know, 50 people, and a high school baseball game with 100. We have 150 people just in that area, never mind coming through the park, or exiting the park and needing a restroom real quick, and we have that Sandy can that we pay for monthly to provide something for, for our customers that come through the park and residents, so. The commission feels very strongly on this project to see it through. We are in for 10,000 of the design costs. We are in for 10,000 of the design costs, of the estimated design costs. 40,000 might be a high number, but it's, we're in for 25%. And the last thing I wanted to do was put CPA for 20, and then have it come in at 40, and now we're in, we're on the hook for 20, or I got to go back through and, and try to get 10 more out of CPA and, and extend it out for another two months process. Would rather go high, see what it comes in at. We're at 25%. We save money on design costs, we're saving money out of our pocket as park and rec, and we're saving CPA money, and then the money would just go back to the CPA once it's, once it's funded out.
I saw Councilor Rist first, Councilor.
I just wanted to clarify, this is reimbursement, so if it is high, CPA isn't handing out a check of 30,000, they'll only pay for what the actual cost is. So you don't have to worry that there's going to be a slush fund someplace.
Yeah, no, it goes right back to CPA.
Council speak.
I hope this isn't a dumb question, but did you guys look at all into what it would cost to just build a new bathroom facility?
Yeah, there's several, we looked at that cost, and there's two, two issues that we have internally, is to take a historic building, like the Stone House, and then basically condemn it, and have a building that's going to succumb to vandalism, or someone moving in there, or, you know, just general decay, and have, and put a similar bathroom next to it. Doesn't seem right. This, this, this building has a lot of historic significance in the community, and I think I have a guest here this evening that can, that can talk more about that, and what it means for, for the park in that area. So, we did look at that, but...
What's the cost, John?
It's going to be, it's going to be the same, it's going to be 350,000, 400,000 dollars to build.
Just to build a new one?
Yeah.
That, that seems, I'm sure you didn't remember, that just seems incredible to me, that's almost twice what my house costs.
You didn't have to pay prevailing wage. We have to pay prevailing wage on all projects. Prevailing wage pretty much doubles the cost of a project. And, and to, yeah, the, the, the one that was built 10, 12 years ago, bathroom two, was 275, and you're looking at 10, 12 years ago. Nothing's, nothing's gotten cheaper through the years. Yeah, it's, it's, I don't want to get on prevailing wage, but prevailing wage kills a lot of small projects in communities. Like, it has its place, and it, but it takes a lot of dollars to get, not as much as you can get as a homeowner done, and it, and, and that's just the way, that's what we're in. We're, we're in on that, and we have to abide by that, and, and that's where a lot of the costs occur.
Councilor.
I have two questions, is it appropriate? Thank you. What is the, the monthly, the monthly cost of the porta potty?
So we spend roughly about $1,500 for the porta potty per year, because we only have it seasonal, yeah, we only have it seasonal.
Per year, oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's six months that we, that we keep it.
And then, and I never thought I'd ask a question like this in a public meeting, the, the Stone House bathrooms, approximately, they're, they're gendered bathrooms, I'm assuming, men and women?
Yep.
And how many stalls do each have, or how many?
So the women's side has three, and the men's side has two urinals and two toilets, I believe.
So significantly more accommodations than you have now with the single?
Yes, definitely. And we bring it up to ADA specs as well, which is an important part of this project.
Council Kozinski.
Okay. I had lots of questions for the project, because I was stunned of, for the $40,000 expense for designs. This is a bathroom. You can renovate an entire house for $100,000 and do one heck of a job, bringing a house up to high standards, high, high-quality materials in a renovation project. However, we took a look at the project, and I was, George Meliger was very gracious in covering while you were away, to be able to go ahead and look inside. It is a gorgeous building. This building should be restored, brought back to life in some way. It is, in my opinion, and I, we didn't go and poke every area of the site, but when one does, I think they're going to find that this is a very solid structure that is very much worthy of bringing back to life, and at a reasonable cost. That being said, I still had some questions about the need for an architect. I know you had submitted two plans, and you're saying that in order to get the project approved, it's not a requirement of either of the grant agencies.
No, but it, it goes a long way, and, and I wish Jeff...
And I know, I know you want to present a very professional plan, one that has as much detail as possible, and scoping out the expenses. So, I'd ask you, in, have you done a scope of project that you've sent out to an, to an architectural firm, and said, hey, give us these, given these specs, what is the cost going to be, and who were those firms that you checked with?
We didn't send it out to an architectural firm to, to look at the specs. We're going to pay someone to, to come in and look at the, what, what we, we have a scope of work that we think needs to be done. They're, they're the ones that are professional.
Right, they're going to, they're going to cost out the job, and all, but I guess the question was, how did you come up with the figure? Because I know, and one of the projects you submitted a design cost for 25,000?
We met with someone in the business, in the construction business, who's...
Someone who had bid on this project?
Who's, who's, we, we brought him in to look at, just, just off the record, just to say, what are we looking at here? What do you think? In your professional opinion, where, where are we going? And he said, you're going to be, if you want to go here, you're going to be at 350 to 400,000 all day long. And this is someone that's very respected in, in the industry. They're not going to put a number on the, on, you know, on the table, they're just, it was just, we brought someone in that, that has done work in the city, that, that we knew we could talk to, and would give us an honest opinion about where we're going.
I know, at one time, in one of the estimates, it was $25,000 for design that was recently submitted, I'm not sure if it was the park grant or the ADA grant.
Yeah, that was, that was two years ago, yeah. Like I said, we want to, we're, we're on the side of caution here, just to make sure that we...
In terms of the, the specs that you used, some of them were tile, in, it's not tile now, it's cement floor, cement, stucco walls. In terms of tile, I'm envisioning very expensive tile to, could you discuss that just a bit?
We're just looking at, to give it a cleaner, nicer look, I mean, we have, we have tile in some of our other facilities. It's aesthetically, you know, it's not, you know, we're not looking at putting gold on the side of the walls there, but it's, you know, and that's the things when we, when we, when we sit down with the architect, or whoever is going to move forward us, and, and we start looking at, and they start hammering out numbers, saying, you know, if you take this off, you're going to save 5,000 on the project, then we're, we're in. You know, we, we, we want to start here, and when we have to start paring down, we're going to start paring down, whether it's removing a facility, you know, one of the restrooms on either side, whatever it is that we can start cutting costs, we'll, we'll cut costs appropriately. But we want to make sure that we're, we're here first, and then we'll go, you know, because like I said, I'm not sure what they're going to... My opinion, the building's solid.
Solid.
When they bring professionals in, they might say, you know, you're, you're looking at problems here, you're looking at problems here, you're looking at problems here. My opinion doesn't really matter in the, in that, in that profession.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add something that John said about how many people go there to those fields. He mentioned there was only, there was high school and coed. I just want to be clear, there is more than that.
Well, that's just up at Daily Field, yeah.
But EBC play there, the weekends, they play doubleheader, people from all over the state come there. Teddy and Over play Sundays, people from over, even from Connecticut come here, and we have basketball courts, we have tennis court, and we have playground there, really close to Daily Field, so it's more than...
Yeah, that's an excellent point. There's a lot more than, you know, that they're on a, on a, especially on the weekends now, with the EBC club, the Quavon Valley, there's, it's jamming, you know, it's jamming all the time in the park.
I just want to add, there is more than, than those two groups.
Just to clarify, the CPA did ask about the idea of conceptual drawings, like we do, when we did the school, we went from conceptual drawings to actual construction drawings, where we'll get bid documents. We're going right to construction drawings, because we don't, we don't want to take the chance that a grant will be refused, because the drawings aren't sufficient. We could pay less for conceptual drawings, but that would be, you still have to get construction drawings anyway, so why not get the best drawings to begin with, the drawings that they will use to actually build the building, once they get the grants and once the funding's in place. So it's, it's, it's more efficient, it's more costly, but it is something you'd have to do anyway, eventually. So by doing this, I think we have a better shot at the grants, by having the proper documents.
Absolutely.
So I think that was the CPA's point there.
Good, Councilor Lynch.
Just one question on, you know, the upstairs used to be the old park and rec office?
Yes, yes.
You're going to move it back there?
Is that, any plans to refurbish that into some other kind of a use, you know?
Yeah, we'll use it for storage, yeah.
Just storage?
Yeah, you know, but we're not going to do, we're not going to spend a lot of money up in that area, but yeah, it actually is used for storage now, there's, some of our Halloween stuff that we store is in there, that kind of goes with the feeling that I think it's haunted up there, but, so, you know, we, we do store stuff in there, there's some others things in there. It's not, it's weather tight, so it's not ideal for storage, but it's weather tight, which is, yeah, which is, which is a good sign for the, for the building itself.
Thanks.
Just no questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public who'd like to address the council on this appropriation for the refurbishment of the... Okay, you just take your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Brian Hilfle, and I live at 62 Taft Avenue. For those of you that are not familiar with that address, I am directly adjacent to that stone building that, that everyone's talking about. So, for me, thank you for speaking about the aesthetics of the building. Me personally, my grandfather built that house in 1949. I'm in there now. I look at that building every day of my life. I came here because I heard that people were talking about possibly putting in, you know, a row of Sandy cans, or, you know, there were talks about a trailer perhaps going in, and I don't know about you guys, but if I pulled up with a, a bathroom trailer to the back of your yard, I'm, I'm sure you probably wouldn't appreciate that too much. So, functionally speaking, I, I think it's something that needs to get done. John, how many years has it been since it's been functional?
Around five, this will be our fifth.
I was going to say, around five. And me personally, there has been knocks on my door with mothers and children, because they need to go to the bathroom, and a Sandy can is just not, you know, something that they want to go to. So, these are people I don't know. Eleanor, I don't know if that's happened to you, but it's certainly happened to me. And I let them in, and make sure that they, you know, had somewhere to, to do that. But artists have been out there, you know, painting this building. I myself, I'm not a picture taker, but, you know, the building, I can show you pictures, looks amazing with the sunset behind Williston Fields, you know, Bill, you can attest to that, too. You know, functionally, it's just, I, I think there's more than the 150 by far that come through, there's probably 150 people that walk their dogs, you know, per day. The mailman used to stop there every single day to go to the bathroom, and now, now we can't. So, functionally speaking, it, it needs to happen. There was, just today, there was a line of kids at, at one Sandy can, lining up to go to the bathroom. Where do they go? So I think it's something that would be a good use of the money. And aesthetically speaking, you know, for me and the rest of the neighborhood, it's just, it's a great building, it's structurally sound, and I just wouldn't be accepting of really anything, any other structure blocking my view of, you know, the game that's going on, or the mountain, or anything else, so that's my two cents. I appreciate your consideration to the project.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Thank you.
History lesson now, for sure.
Yeah. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Can you adjust the microphone down? That's good, we'll hear you better.
I got a strong voice.
Oh, I see.
You've been...
51 Taft Avenue, right on the corner. And like Brian said, knock, knock on the, can I use your bathroom? One little kid, I felt so bad for him, he come running in, and he's in the bathroom so damn long, and the water's running and running, and then he runs out, thank you! And he runs out. Three days later, what do I find? His dirty underwear in my cupboard. So we need to, toilet facilities, I don't know through which administration they neglected to take care of the building. That was built by the WPA. I, I didn't know, remember the year, because I'm not a native, I'm from North Hadley. And my husband always spoke about it, he, during World War II, he did, when an airplane would go over, he'd have to document it. And he always said, there was always people during the daytime that used that bathroom, the men's and the women's. And, you know, we had, it's a beautiful stone building. And the same thing, that building down at Brookside Cemetery was built by the WPA, but that one was built, no toilet facilities, I don't think, I don't know. They stored coffins there, because they never buried in the wintertime. So that, and someday has to be made sure they take care of it. So I would appreciate it if they would fix the toilets up and keep that building, so that it'll be here for another 100 years. So, thank you, and, because someday I don't want to see one of you knocking at my door.
It'll be me.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address the council on this matter? Okay, Councilor Rist.
I'll make a motion that the full council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is $30,000. To be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Open Space account, $30,000. To be appropriated to Non-Ittuck Park Stone House Bathroom Design, $30,000. For the following purpose: For design phase, prepare construction plans, cost estimates, bid documents and specifications, bidding and construction oversight for capital improvements to rehabilitate historic Stone House into bathrooms for the Non-Ittuck Park Daily Field Recreational Facility.
I will second. Okay, a second, a motion, a second for supplemental appropriation of $30,000 for the initial design work for the Non-Ittuck Park Stone House Bathroom Design.
I do have one comment. I will vote in favor of this, but I will like to ask our recreation director that we coordinate as much as possible with the DPW, if this is passed, and with the engineering department to utilize whatever services they may have. We now have an assistant engineer, and they may have some skills that may help to ease the workload for any architect that might be involved. So I'd like you to look into that if possible, and...
Okay. Any other comments? Councilor.
I, I think that, you know, having seen that building pretty much my whole life, I think it is really important to preserve. I would like to see as part of this project, potentially seeing a plaque that kind of details its historical significance, you know, so it doesn't get lost. Because I feel like that's something that is important, and hopefully this will last for another 100 years, and people will know the historical significance of it, so.
That's all I can say. Okay, Councilor Rist.
Council Derby brings up a point that I wanted to make clear. You know I'm a big proponent of the CPA and CPA funding. This is a historic building. We use the CPA to help preserve historic, not only for recreational function, but to preserve historic buildings, and to help the quality of life in our community. CPA committee does ask that when we use the funds for any project, some kind of signage is put there, so the residents know the taxes they pay for CPA are being used in a quality way. And I just want to thank the council for considering this. for considering this.
Okay, any additional comments? Okay, is there a motion, a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
The next item up is a supplemental appropriation, $475,000. This is typically for a snow emergency, the pay for our snow and ice removal. As some of you may or may not know, the snow and ice budget can be deficit. What that means is, if we didn't have other funding, it's the only account the DOR allows us to pay out of next year's funds. Fortunately, for many years, we've had extra funding, especially in free cash, to pay for this. Typically, we budget a lot less, because we don't know how much snow and ice removal will need, and if we budgeted a larger amount, we have to, because of that deficit requirement, budget the same the next year, which if we didn't have that much snow and ice, that money couldn't be used in another account. So, we typically budget a lower amount, expecting if it's a bad winter, to do this. So, this is a typical expense, it is not, in other words, it's not unusual, but what I'm happy with is the last few years we've been able to pay for it upfront, and not have to deficit into our next budget. Fortunately, we have no one from the administration here that can answer these questions, so I hope that suffices. I'll be happy to answer any that I can.
Jane, did you want to cover snow and ice?
No, I don't think this is personnel related.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to address the council on this appropriation? Okay, Counselor Rist?
No questions? Okay. I'll make the following motion for the, for supplemental appropriation to cover snow and ice deficit. The amount requested is $175,000. To be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to, snow and ice overtime, $15,000. Rental equipment, $36,765,000. Chemicals, $16,000. Salt, $95,410. And school plowing, $11,825. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to cover the snow and ice deficit in accordance with the city's free cash financial policy. Free cash priority number four, extraordinary deficits to fund potential deficits that would otherwise be carried over to the following fiscal year.
Second. A motion, second for supplemental appropriation of $175,000 for snow and ice removal. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, now we have, lastly, the pay plan review. As you know, we funded Collins Center to do a major pay plan review. I will read my report, which is based on a few hours of, and a couple of meetings with the personnel director and the mayor over this, and I'll ask Jane to come up to also detail some of what I'm gonna say. Suffice it to say, the Collins Center does a lot of these. The woman who came to talk to us had done 60 just this year, I think she said, and they are very scientific. So, I'll read from my report. "The Finance Committee voted three to zero to recommend that the full council approve the pay plan Exhibit A and B after considerable discussion. We were lucky to have a representative from the Collins Center explain how they reached their findings. The following details of the pay plan are stated as facts by the personnel director for the record, that no current employee will suffer any loss in salary with the adoption of this pay plan, that no one's job description will change adding new responsibilities to their work. Job descriptions submitted by Collins Center have been done to match what employees already do. They have been researched and also examined by the employees through department head interviews. They are being updated to the format used by the city. That the pay plan was developed by the Collins Center through a thorough study of existing positions and also salaries and pay scales compared to other similar communities. This scientific research included many factors and not simply a comparison study. Those factors include supervision required, complexity, nature and purpose of contracts, supervisory responsibility, confidentiality, occupation risks, accountability, education required, work environment, judgment, experience required, physical requirements, and certification and licenses. The pay plan proposed is a plan dealing with the positions that exist and not current employees in those positions. In other words, this is a position study, and thus the pay and plan and salary scale is an independent study and recommendation for what is best for city and town practice. It assists the city in determining what that position should be paid, not what a person in the position should be paid. Annual step increases will continue so that previously maxed out employees will again be given step increases on the anniversary of their employment. It was also established that this is a policy of the current administration, but is not mandated by charter or state law. There was a time when step increases did not happen. Stipends for extra work for some employees, notably the city clerk, the auditor, the finance director, will not be changed, even though the Collins report suggested. The proposed pay grid takes into consideration that some positions receive stipends. In other words, the way these people are being paid is going to be continued. No new positions are established with this revised pay plan. The Finance Committee strongly recommends that any new position must be proposed and accepted by the council through ordinance or administrative code request, and only after that would it appear in a future pay plan. The estimated plan cost implemented is estimated to be $72,722 for the first year. The mayor will submit a supplemental appropriation, as this amount is not in the current budget. In other words, when we approve this, the mayor will decide when to fund it, and this approval takes place on July 1st. That's when it, it actually is implemented. And I'd like to call Jane up to supplement what I've just presented. And I would like to thank you personally for being the Collins Center representative, because she was excellent, answered a lot of questions. And I'd like to thank my colleagues, they asked a lot of great questions on the Finance Committee. It was thoroughly reviewed.
The plan, we really took into account the fact that we have a lot of employees that, we're happy to say, have a lot of longevity here with the city. So, they're maxed out.
So, if there's a year where we're not awarded cost of living increases, those employees don't get a raise, because they don't get another step increase. The new grid extends the number of steps. So, the people that have been here with the city for a long time are able to continue to get basically the equivalent of merit increases. So, we, that's one of the biggest points with the new grid.
Any questions for Personnel Director, considering the, the study or the plan? Counselor Derby?
So, the steps, when you, you mentioned cost of living, essentially moving from step to step. Is there an average of, or is it by position and grade of what the increase is step by step?
There's approximately, on the new grid, there's approximately 2.5% across all grades, for each step is a 2.5%.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, additional questions? Personnel Director?
Well, great, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor. When, it says in, in the report that this won't lead to the loss in salary, I'm just, salary means just general compensation entirely, right? Like, we're not differentiating between, like, hourly and salaried employees?
No.
Okay.
We all are, even the quote-unquote salaried employees are hourly, because, and that was one of the things that Collins Center stressed, was the easiest way to make it fair is to make all of their reports hourly.
But there might be some employees who currently are, have like an hourly wage, which is higher than what it will be for like a future person who's hired into that position because of this correction, is that what I'm...
Correct. When a new person comes in, we, we look, before we make the offer, we evaluate their education, and where on the grid would they fall. Would they start at step one, with no, basically no experience, just the minimum qualifications?
Right.
Or do they bring with them many years, extra certifications, extra education, which would move them and maybe start them at step four or step six?
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone from the public who'd like to address the council on this pay plan change? No? Okay, Counselor Rist?
Okay, I'll make two motions for each exhibit.
Exhibit A, classification of employees. I move to amend the City Ordinance, Chapter 7, the Classification and Pay Plan, Section 7-17A. By substituting classification of employees Exhibit A, as on file in the office of the city clerk dated May 6, 2015, with a revised Exhibit A dated May 1, 2019, is made available for this meeting and on file with the office of the city clerk.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, the second to accept the, just previously read, Classification Pay Plan Change. Additional questions or comments? Counselor Krasinski?
Just wanted to comment on this a bit, because it does affect East Hampton's finances, and originally, we weren't presented with the information which gave us the numbers of what exactly the effect was. And I do appreciate getting those numbers, and again, that's how we arrived at the $72,000 approximately, for the first year. In the second year, that of course would be the same amount, plus probably a little bit higher, give or take who fills positions. So, we are making a decision here regarding not only our existing budget, we have a budget proposal for next year, fiscal year, but we also have an increase that would be on top of whatever budget we'll be working on in the near future. So, the question remains, what we're, what we're voting on tonight, I wanted to be clear about, is the Classification and Pay Plan. It isn't the implementation of the funding of the plan. The funding of the plan is not in the budget, currently. This would come, as Counselor Rist had said, as a supplemental appropriation. So, I really had some concerns about voting on the plan and saying this, that we approved this plan, but we don't know if we're gonna fund it, or how we're gonna fund it, and we haven't even taken a look at our budget for next year. However, in committee, we discussed that, and we felt pretty comfortable that we could work on ways to either delay the implementation, that the plan could be put into effect and funded partially, it could be funded half one year, or start in the second half of the, of the fiscal year. So, there were ways to look at that. So, that is within the council's authority to do. Or to say, hey, let, let's, let's stretch it out over, over two years or three years. I just wanted to be clear about that, that we're not locking the city into a position where we're accepting a plan and funding it, because we're not funding it tonight.
Counselor Rist?
I understand Counselor Krasinski's caution, but I want to point out a couple things. Pay plan employees are not unionized. This will add internal equity, brings them more in line with many other communities in the way their pay scales are, are set up. And, as I stated, I believe former Mayor Taznik did not always do step increases. So, if there was no COLA, they got nothing, even if they were entitled based on the policy of getting a step increase at the anniversary of their employment. So, the mayor could choose not to fund this. But if we're going to support, as we should, collective bargaining units, and give them the funding they deserve for salary, I would strongly urge us to, when that supplemental appropriation comes, understand if the mayor thinks she can afford it for our pay plan employees, I will certainly support it. I'd like us to have equity amongst all of our employees, and I believe this helps, and I believe if we are going to increase salaries or funding, and apologize, Tom, I use that term, hourly wages, whatever way we're gonna talk about it, we ought to look at our pay plan employees along those lines. They are not representative, represented by a collective bargaining unit, so they rely on us, and they rely on the mayor's good gracious, to fund any step increases they may feel they could get. Again, they didn't always happen. So, I would, I would like us to consider that, that is not on the table tonight, Counselor Krasinski's correct. But when this does come before us, then that'll be another debate, I guess.
One other point, I believe there was another position in here that we didn't, you didn't discuss tonight, that was, that is not, not in here.
Well, we're talking about the chief of staff position, it was removed, and as I stated, the Finance Committee was made, made it clear that we prefer those kinds of positions, anything new. The pay plan is the second part of the process. The first part is getting the position adopted, and as Counselor Zaret asked it, when we would determine where it would fall in the pay plan, based on what the job description is, whatever that position is, not just the chief of staff if it was adopted. It's interesting to note, I'm not defending the mayor and the chief of staff in any way, but there are chief of staffs listed, the Collins Center looked at that, and it was the Collins Center that put it in the pay plan, not the mayor. So, you should know that, they did that. But we asked that it be removed, and they were happy to do that.
Okay, so questions or comments on that? I believe there is a motion, a second. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Second is the Exhibit B, Salary and Wage Scale. I move to amend City Ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 7-18, the Classification and Pay Plan by substituting Exhibit B, Salary and Wage Scale, as on file in the office of city clerk dated January 1, 2019, with a revised Exhibit B, Salary and Wage Scale, as made available for this meeting, and on file with the office of city clerk to establish the effective date of said substitution as July 1, 2019.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second to accept, again, Chapter 7, Section 17, 18, but Exhibit B. Additional questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Mr. President, I move the public hearings to be closed.
Second.
A motion, second to close public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. Back to standing committees. Ordinance, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance subcommittee did meet last night, and we did meet with the person who was proposing a quadricycle to come through East Hampton. That is an ongoing discussion we're having. I do want to let people know that on the 7th, May 7th, we have a joint public hearing with the planning board at 6:00 and 6:30. We're looking at two separate issues, we're looking at the cannabis equity ordinance, and we are also looking at the zero lot lines in the Mill Industrial District. I've given my committee members homework as it relates to the cannabis equity ordinance. I, I will say that it would probably behoove the rest of the council to, to partake in this homework as well. And there is a new documentary on Netflix called The Grass Is Greener, which specifically speaks of cannabis equity, and, and kind of its current state, and states where it's legalized. So, and I think that's important for people to understand as we start looking at cannabis equity in East Hampton. I do want to say that we have our next regular meeting on the 21st at 5:15, Conference Room 1. And I do have a little housekeeping, so if you would indulge me. I would like to request a 30-day extension on the welcoming community trust ordinance, in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for 30-day continuation of the welcoming community trust ordinance. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye. Oppose, abstain? I'm sorry. I will just say, just an update on that, it is with the city attorney. We did get an update from the mayor last night that he is reviewing it, it is under review. The kind of current situation with, I guess, has protracted that a little bit, where a judge and a bailiff were arrested or charged. And so, there was something about that that made them want to review it further. But that's all we know, we're still waiting on the review. And then, the next thing I would like to do is I would like to request a 90-day extension on the proposed changes for open consumption of alcohol and cannabis, in the form of motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for 90-day extension on the open consumption of alcohol and cannabis. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Next is 30-day extension to the mobile multi-passenger bike serving alcohol, in the form of motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for a 30-day extension for the mobile multi-passenger bikes, bike serving alcohol. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. Counselor Rist was...
May I ask a question?
Please.
About the multi-bike, multi-passenger bike?
Yes.
Is that two separate issues? One is whether it can serve alcohol, and secondly, whether it can actually work on the bike path, or is the bike path part of it not really under your purview unless you want to establish ordinances on that?
Yeah, so, you're exactly right. You know, really what is under our purview specifically, both of those things are. But, one of the things, whether it can serve alcohol... one of the things, whether it can serve alcohol and, you know, in public, on a public way, is one of the things that they were hoping we would look to change. I don't, and we told them last night, and I'll say it here, I don't believe that that is something that we're willing to do at this point, and so that was disappointing to them. But, you know, at this, you know, what we have talked about was creating some regulations that would allow it to potentially be on the bike path. If it's a trial basis or whatever, that's, we're still working that out. But right now, there's nothing to stop them, and they have been going on the bike path.
So they have.
They have. Not serving alcohol. And we did actually get to go see it. We had a site visit and we did see it in action on the bike path, so.
I just wanted to say that there were some concerns brought to my attention about how wide it is and whether or not it takes up more than two-thirds of the bike path going in one direction. And that concerns me, and I'd like you to consider that as you develop any rules or ordinances for the bike path. And I know the bike path committee, I guess Barbara knows this, if they support it, I'll support it, but I'm concerned about that.
That is something that we did look at, are looking at, continue to look at.
Thank you very much.
I think Counselor Zareid had...
Yeah, just to echo what Counselor and ordinance chair Derby was saying is that regarding the bike path, we still need to look into that in regards to the nature of the operation of the vehicle. They say that they're a, I'm getting, I'm trying to gather information about what exactly constitutes a pedal-assisted bike, and the nature in which they're powered with an, with an electric motor may not necessarily fit into that, but it's all part of an ongoing discussion and investigation. So just to put that out there as well.
Thank you.
And I was concerned about the size as well, but...
Okay, okay. And so one last housekeeping. I'd like to request a ninety-day extension to the review of on and off-street private parking limitations in the form of motion.
Second. A motion of second for a ninety-day extension of on-off-street parking, residence parking. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
That concludes, thank you.
Property, Counselor Krasinski?
No report this evening?
Okay, thank you. Rules of Government Relations, Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did not meet since our last meeting. I know that Counselor Rist has two items he would like to add to our agenda, so you would like to discuss them, Counselor Rist?
I'd just like to move both of those items to the rules.
Great.
You could do it.
So I would like to first make a motion to move a discussion of a new rule regarding motion procedures to rules and government relations.
Second. Okay, a motion of second to move to rules and government relation, conversation relating to a new rule, six G, on the motion procedure. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And second, I'd like to move a discussion about amending Rule Eight votes to rules and government relations.
Okay.
Okay, a motion of second to move also to rules and regulation, request amend Rule Eight. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Great, so we'll set a meeting to discuss those and then we'll let everyone know when we talk of time.
Great, thank you. Charter review.
Thank you. Mr. President, I want to announce that there will be no meeting on the ninth of this month. Normally, we would have a meeting, but we decided to postpone and have only one meeting in May because of the numerous Finance Committee meetings that a lot of us want to attend by chair. So the only meeting we'll have in May is, I think it's the twenty-fifth, I'm not positive on that date. At this time, I would like to schedule a public hearing in the form of a motion for the adoption to, or for the recommendation by the Charter Review Committee to send to the legislature for ballot insertion, ranked choice voting and term of office that the Charter Review Committee has sent to the city attorney, and that we would like to set a public hearing for that at the next meeting in these chambers.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second, so to set a public hearing relating to the proposed charter changes relating to ranked choice voting in terms of office. Any additional questions or comment on that?
I just wanted to state that we will, promised from the city attorney today that he would get it to us by either tomorrow or Monday, the final document. If for some reason we don't get it in sufficient time, we'll just have to continue the public hearing. It was my hope, because that might have a lot of discussion, to get that done in May, also to get it to the legislature in time so that it can be reviewed and get on the ballot. There were minor changes. The city attorney talked to myself and Counselor Peak today about adding a definition of ranked choice voting to Article One, which would, it's not really changing content, it's moving things to there at his suggestion. So that will be in your mailboxes as soon as I can get it, and Barbara will determine whether, what has to be published. So thank you if we could vote on that.
Counselor Zareid?
Mr. President, I will not be present at the next meeting. Is there, as a point of procedure, is there an appropriate way in keeping with open meeting laws to submit any support or lack thereof for...
You can certainly, I don't believe there's an open meeting violation if you submit a request that the president read your comments at the meeting. What you can't do is email everybody and say, hey, this is how I feel about it and I'd like to hear your comments. You can't do that. And I would certainly suggest that you don't do that on Facebook or any other social media page. I don't even know whether that's an open meeting violation, so why take the chance?
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And we did review and are close to finishing Article Six, which has to deal with administrative code, ordinance and Department of Public Works. That again will be discussed at our only meeting in May. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm turning a motion to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? See you May fifteenth.
We have to sign a number of...